This.
All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January twenty first. Like to call the meeting to order. Um, the county clerk will do roll call. Um, just to pass me. So this was one of the things we added, which I guess I could do it.
Yeah, it, you know.
Okay, um, so. We had added roll call so that we have record in our minutes of who's present. Um, so Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn, present. Okay, so we do not have an invocation today, uh, but if you please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God and is with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comment. Seeing none. Uh, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda for January twenty first, twenty twenty five as presented?
Some. Sure.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, consent agenda. The first item is the commission meeting minutes. I have two sets of minutes. I have a set for. January seventh. But I would look for a motion to approve. Eric, that's just you and me, I think, on that one, because. Alan, we're still here.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'll make the motion then.
Okay, I will second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Two. To zero with Commissioner Campbell upstanding. All right, and then we have last Monday, January thirteenth of twenty twenty five, um, minutes. I have a motion to approve those.
Still move. Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. All right. We have the finance director, um, that will be giving us a review on payroll, credit cards, and expenses.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. So since this is new, not exactly how you kind of want it to go, but I did have some information and. I think you probably just tweak it as you see fit and. I'll adjust to what information you guys need. So the first thing is payroll. There is no payroll this week. Um, credit cards, the credit card total. Um, in this AP run that. Is tomorrow is seven thousand five twenty one sixty nine. Um. Like I went through the list, uh, reviewed the credit cards. Um, I didn't really see anything that stood out to me. It was, um. Odd. Um, I don't know if you guys want a copy of the list beforehand, so you guys can review it. Um, or like before the meeting or not, uh, but I can pass around a list of the credit cards and you can take a look.
I would say if there was something that stood out that you wrote.
Sure.
I would have a copy for it. Other than that, if there's nothing that we, you think that we need to see, I don't think it's necessary just to make a statement.
One thing I just wanna keep noting is the descriptions on that first page. There's some highlighted. Um, descriptions. It's all depending on who enters. The invoice to pay it. So like the, the two that's highlighted, it was one employee that entered it and put. The entire description in there. So it looks like, um, it's paying more. Or different types on that one transaction, but it's, it's really different. Um, so. It's, it's just how kind of people use the description piece.
So then to get that corrected, is that something where you work with that individual to give them? Okay.
It's just a, a learning curve of how they enter it, so. Um. And then the expenses for, for tomorrow's payday. Is fifty five thousand seven eighty nine twenty six. Um, I also went through the list and they, it kind of appears that there's all the normal vendors. Um, there's some that is only paid annually. There's others that were additional expenses. Um, for the snow that we had. Um. I don't know if you have any questions about the expenses or not. With, with this of. With this batch of expenses, our general fund. Balance is negative. It's negative right now, but it will go more so negative, uh, to the tune of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the hole. That is. Uh, due to not having a distribution yet. So the distribution is January thirty first. That is the. The money that's collected from taxes get distributed to all the different funds, not just general. It could be, um. All the cemeteries, the townships, uh, noxious weed, extension council, all of the levied funds is gonna get a piece of that. Um, I. So that won't happen till the thirty first. So we will continue to be negative until that happens. I don't know an exact total of how much will come into the general fund. Um. But it, it is gonna be way more to, than that, to cover that. Um. So.
But we're not over budget.
You're not, no. It's not over budget. It's just a shortfall because we haven't had the distribution yet. So. Um. I have a, in my next thing on the agenda a little bit later, if you talk about reserves. Um, and in there was we had. A cash balance of two hundred and some thousand, but two hundred and fifteen of that is a CD that Connie cashed in. So. We should have a, when we get to that point, we should talk about. Roll over reserves, unused twenty twenty four budget and. So you guys kind of have all of the details. So just keep in mind, if we roll over anything from twenty twenty four budget into the reserve fund. This balance will, will go negative more so.
Okay, I have a question for clarification, because I followed you all the way towards the end of twenty twenty four. You were keeping us close monitoring it.
Yeah.
So what you'll go over with us later would be where twenty twenty four ended up. And cashing out that CD to bring us whole. This two seventy is twenty twenty five start. Okay, that separate conversation. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this two seventy is, is twenty twenty five negative. Because we've spent, um, I mean, payrolls happened. Accounts payable happened, because there were some invoices that weren't period thirteen, twenty twenty four. There were some invoices that were paid. Um, that are twenty twenty five true expenses. So out of all of these different things that have occurred, we're negative two seventy. And that's factoring in revenue as well.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. So when you say we haven't done the distribution yet.
Yeah, so those are the taxes that people pay. Um, they go to the tax holding fund. Until the Treasury's office does the distribution. Then based on the percentages and the mill levy. Uh, for all the entities, it splits it out. So a portion will go to general, a portion will go to, um. Noxious weed and extension council and all those other entities. Uh, cemeteries, townships, all those.
And are those monthly or how?
No, it's, um, I think there's four or five a year. There's when in January. Either March or April, June, October.
So the rep, so is there revenue already hitting those, that account?
Some, some, um, uh, maybe ten thousand in revenue.
Relatively small.
Relatively, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and it's pretty much all EMS. EMS and, um, law enforcement has, has done some, but it's mainly EMS.
Do we have an idea then? How much we were short for twenty twenty four on re- revenue of all kinds?
Um. No, I need to get that number. I'll fill a number that comes from C I C to know exactly how much.
Okay, and I mean, that's what I would like to follow up on is and where. That is short. I mean, what, and again, if there's gonna be a trend to that, because that's gonna be big. I think when we, uh, consider our next budget, whether we're gonna have to consider, yeah, I mean, more of a. Uh, I don't know what you call it, a gap or, uh, make sure that we don't have that shortfall if we anticipating that increasing or staying the same. Um. Because there's no need of keep on. Budgeting down to the nitty gritty when we know that last year we were short and it's been trending to get even shorter in the future. I mean, we need to make that contingency.
I also want to follow up on the, um. See if there was collected taxes from like delinquent from prior year, like maybe twenty twenty two or twenty three. Um, to see if they paid. Because if they, if they paid delinquent, it would come in this budget year and it would be part of the distribution. So you kind of have to, uh. Know what year is being paid, I guess, because if they pay a delinquent year, that goes into your revenue of twenty five. But it should have went into revenue of the year. It was due at the time. So just kind of knowing how much is paid and due and. It's kind of hard to track, but I think it's doable. Because there, there should be a report that shows. Um. Uncollected but paid in a different year type of report. So we would know in twenty twenty two. Like a hundred thousand was outstanding, but then thirty thousand of it was cleaned up. So we know in twenty five, thirty thousand is new money, I guess, so to say.
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't part of what was supposed to be collected for twenty five. It's a lot of numbers and figures to juggle.
And what's gonna be the next update on that? On our twenty five fund, the. When it becomes. Solvent again, when it becomes out of the negative, what's gonna be the next update?
That will probably won't be until February fourth, because the dis- distribution will happen next Friday. So as long as all the timelines stay current and all the duties get done, should be February fourth meeting. We should have that. Results.
Hold on, the nine ninety seven fund, will you be going over that later in yours?
I, I, I didn't prepare that at the time.
Noticed when I signed, point communications was negative. Um, so didn't know what, how that sales tax was varying.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Um. I can, I can wrap that in. Okay, that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
You're watching this. This isn't a. This is a, this is a normal cycle.
Yes.
For intake.
I mean, when you start the year at zero. And you have expenses, you're gonna wind up negative before we get our distribution. So that's.
And is there anything that? That we can do? Going down the road that would. That helps this, this kind of shortfall, you know, give and take. Is there, is there? Is there anything we can do, um? How we take money in? You know, or, or payout to help, because we know the cycles, right?
Right.
I would assume.
We know when we get.
May is gonna be another.
Let's see, another huge, you get May's money in June at the June distribution. And then there's people that pay after the deadline. So that's when the October distribution happens. Um, but after October, there's no more money, big money from taxes that come in.
I think it's the normal cycle, but it's not normal in the fact that we haven't collected as much as anticipated.
Four hundred thousand.
So I don't think we've shown actual negative balances before this time.
We've always had.
The ebbs and flows are the same and it's the same pattern, but because there's been less, uh, revenue come in. And anticipated we're in a negative instead of we were always. Just, uh, above that line. Never, we never did have a lot of money left over.
No.
I mean, we shouldn't really. If you're budgeting correctly, you should be right.
Right.
On that.
Pretty even.
Yeah.
Because our expenses is what the revenue is. They should match.
Sure. And so that's the reason I'm really concerned about what that trend is, what's not coming in. Is this a one-year deal that it didn't come in? Or is this gonna continue and?
And so.
And what's the reason for?
Right. Every other year has been about a hundred thousand of uncollected. And then this year for twenty four is four hundred thousand.
So would the appraiser? Have any? Information on that? It's more specifics. I mean, is it, are we talking about maybe an abatement that we didn't have?
It could be.
Last year, possibly.
They, so.
A big one?
Yeah, the Appraiser's Office would have all the taxes that would be evaded. Um.
So. Just for, just for informational purposes, I, maybe that's somewhere we could go and say, hey, can you give us the difference between? Twenty four, twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five upcoming on abatements, because. I'd be curious to know what we lost. Well, speaking of that, because we were, it was a different year. We had a couple properties that the BODA granted a late. Uh, change in their status to a, a nonprofit, which is part of the reason that threw us late with our tax forms this fall. So did they? Get that maybe the second half of twenty twenty four? Did they? Have to pay that in or not because of that BODA? Or did they get that refunded? Because that would happen, I think, in early August. Mid to late August. So that, and that was very sizable, because there's two, two property or two entities that had, uh. Sure, some things there. So that could be the, uh, part of the, yeah, reason. And that's the first year that I remember such large. Things happening in that timeframe of August, uh, decided by BODA.
Well, I can ask Holly, um, and see, see if she can put together some historical stuff.
That'd be great, yeah. Because it, it, going forward, it'd be nice to know if it was, you know, if it was a one-off and it's not gonna necessarily be the same.
For following year, yeah.
So. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I recently attended the Commissioner's orientation. Well worth. The time and effort to do that. Really good information. Uh, and then got to share. Information with other county commissioners. I think approximately eighty attended. Uh, this orientation, so it was. Well worth the time and, uh, efforts spent.
Hey, Commissioner Noel.
I went, attended the NECAP meeting, which was last Thursday evening, um. Yeah, Iowa, and then I have a N E K E S at Troy this Thursday morning at nine, so. So the only thing I have.
Um, I attended, I guess it was Friday. The K A C new commissioner, uh, orientation, K A C asked me to join a panel of three other commissioners from, um. Kansas counties, uh, to talk about commission and the rearview. Um, it was really great to be able to. Uh, just have that time with other Kansas County Commissioners. I look forward to brainstorming with them and getting information of how they're doing different things and just bringing back some. Bringing back some ideas, uh, for Atchison. So, uh, that was good. Also, just kind of. Um, getting into my new boards, um, Eric has provided me some information from the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department. Um, and then the director there has also sent me some, um, information to absorb. So, um, just kind of getting my feet wet there. Um, and the chamber board meeting is going to be on. In February, they're gonna send me that. And then also, we had gotten this, um, Atchison Area Chamber, uh, is having their annual dinner on February eighth. Um, of twenty twenty five. So this is for the county, um. Really, so historically, we funded them. And, but this year we're not. So. I don't know if we have to purchase the table on behalf of it. So, um, anyway, there's that. If you guys want to look at that, we can talk about it later. Let's see, gauge interest. And so we should probably designate a point person to find out. Um, how much the table is, where it would be paid from, because we didn't budget for that, or if. We'll all contribute for our seat individually, like how you guys want to handle that. Because I know if we don't say it now, there'll be questions when the meeting's over and we won't know. How to do that. So maybe we could look up, they have a link. If we could just look up how much the table is and figure out. If anyone's interested.
You may try and do that.
Yeah, because it's on February eighth, so I assume we would have to R C P by our next. Meeting. And again, historically, when we gave them an appropriation, we had a table, but this year will be different, so. Since there was eight, right? Eight is disabled?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So are you two planning on, what do you feel? Are you?
Probably wouldn't.
You're not? Mr. Campbell?
Nice to meet you. Are you gonna do it?
Nope, I was gonna look at my calendars for February.
I, I probably would try to attend, yes.
Okay. I have it in my calendar, uh, pending a basketball tournament, so. Mine will be to be continued too, but at least. Um, so how do you guys want to handle that as far as the budget? Because we haven't budgeted for it. So do we want to pay for the table out of? Or do we want our attendees to pay for their own seats to create the table? Or what are you feeling?
I would.
A table of eight is five hundred. Or you can purchase individual tickets if you don't want a table and they are seventy. Um. As far as funding, I, with there, it's not in the commission budget. Um, if you wanted to pay for it out of county general. You would probably not go over budget. We probably have to. Not do something else.
Okay. So five hundred a table or seventy a person? Okay, so.
Like if you didn't want to have a whole table and you just wanted to get individual seats at.
Other tables?
Yeah.
I would say. One table, if we could, you could come up with eight, eight individuals, I'd say one table and I, I would, I would be glad to pay for myself. Now, I don't know.
Okay, I'll send it out to department heads and kind of gauge.
See if there's reaction.
Yep, interest, and then we'll know if we'll go the table route or the individual route and then. Um.
Wasn't it last year when we had two tables and we didn't have enough?
Yeah, you and I were like, I think Sherry Becker was there.
Yes.
But, yeah. Okay, so we kind of have an idea of how we'll handle that. Uh, there's no presentations of petitions or proclamations today. Um, unfinished business. Uh, in October, we had asked for. Uh, the clerk to reach out to the sports complex, the A S A F or the recreation board, um, to come and provide an update. They reached out to, um, the county clerk and just asked what, what we're looking for, um, so that they could get on the. Get on the agenda. So I assume we're looking for the original request of just, we asked for an update on their finances. How that was looking and what their projects were, how their projects were coming, uh, talking about the, the sales tax sunset. Um, and then, you know, what? Then we probably should have some internal discussion of what those plans are gonna look like and how we're gonna.
Yeah, what, what happens to the properties and?
Yeah, we need to. So, um, did he give an idea of when he wanted to be?
He said eighteen.
February eighteenth.
February eighteenth.
Okay. All right, so we will schedule him for February eighteenth and then, um. Maybe later in our workshop, we can come up with questions to have the clerks send, so that he knows exactly what we're looking for. Okay, so we will do that. Uh, previous meeting minutes, we did one seven and one thirteen. Do we have twelve thirty? I didn't see twelve thirty. Do we have twelve thirty? I don't think so, yes. We'll, we'll move twelve. Look at that. Yep. Twelve thirty. Okay. All right. Next, we have department heads. We have Scott Howard, our I T director. Um, we have our purchase orders. Um, for computer information concept renewal and go-to renewable. Hi, Scott.
Lord.
So you had sent us this before last week, so, um, I kind of asked my questions last week, just making sure that the amount of. Our quantities were in line with our current employee status. And, um, if you just want to give, I know you did it in our email. Uh, just kind of a brief summary of like what the go-to technologies is, um.
Uh, yeah, so essentially go to, uh, Central Base is our remote support software. So if we have any computers that have problems. We can remote into them and fix them, uh, without them to come to the courthouse or go to the remote office or whatever, so.
Okay. And sorry, I'm printing it out really quick and then I will call for a motion.
So I should have P O's for you guys to sign.
Uh, I'm just not sure. Last week. We had the organizational packet and then it ended up going with me and I brought it back. And so we're just, we're getting our.
Gotcha.
Organizational down here. So I'm just gonna print them and then I'll call for a motion. If you did send them to us in the email. All right, thanks. So I know it's.
It's gonna be double sided, I think.
It's not gonna be a problem. I should probably input that one.
The computer information concepts one would just take a while to print, like twenty pages.
Okay, thank you. Well, we can cancel after the purchase order then. We could cancel it after the purchase order.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have the purchase order, um, and we will be paying for this on hard services, so on the credit card. Um, to go to for our central base quantity two hundred and fifty. And the amount of three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Do you have a motion to? Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Eric, you raised a motion, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I need to.
Yeah, do not mention it. And then if you want to send that one to next one on. And then if you want to send that one to next one on. And then the next one will be for computer information concepts incorporated. It's the annual people where agreement renewal, uh, and the amount of fifty two thousand and five dollars, you just. Briefly summarize what that one is.
C I C is our accounting suite and also it provides other software products for like tran- uh, transfer station for accounts receivable. Uh, tax admin, um. The motor vehicle for antiques, uh. Public works and weed management.
Okay, and this is for countywide, okay, look for a motion to approve this purchase order as presented by our I T director.
I, one quick question, so is this, uh, what's the? The amount you have here, is that um? An increase or is it?
A slight increase, but I think I've mentioned, I think it was six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, and that was due to, um. I believe the employee portal and the time clock.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say hi, hi. Passes, three to zero. Okay, next we have Mark Zeltner, our finance director with the discussion for reserve funds.
Before I started out, you had asked about. The sales tax, um, and the communications and solid waste fund. So the solid waste fund currently is eighty thousand, three hundred dollars negative. And joint communications dispatch is eighty two thousand six hundred negative. Um, we started the twenty twenty five year with. I think a hundred and seventy two dollars. Um, which is great, um, you know, it's it's kind of the same conversation that we had with. The general fund, if you start with nothing and you expense. Uh, items out before you get your. Next distribution, you're gonna be negative, so between both of those, about a hundred and sixty. Um, the sales tax that comes in. Every month is about a hundred and eighty, two hundred, give or take. Um, so I don't anticipate there's gonna be an issue to cover that, so it'll just keep revolving, we get. The payment at the end of the month for the month, so Januaries will come in January thirtieth. Um, and that will cover all of January's expenses, uh, February will will be the same, um. Until there is enough buildup. You may see it go negative from month to month, and then when that receipt hits, it'll go back to zero, so. This is where. We're, for this next budget cycle, we're really gonna have to watch. The sales tax projections, because. Sales tax doesn't really keep going up and up and up unless there's a a lot of spending, so if you. Guys want to keep increasing the budget. The sales tax isn't gonna, might not be there to cover the budget, so. Um, I don't know, we we drop down to three quarter instead of a whole percent, um. So that kind of keeps on track, but. I don't know if a a budget increases can sustain the actual sales tax money that's.
Well, they also done a large project at solid waste, which all came out of sales tax, so that was four hundred and twenty thousand for that, so. Uh, unless we have another project come due, we should have plenty of.
As long as there's not increases, I mean, you guys.
Or decreases in the sales tax, yeah.
Sure.
I think it's probably appropriate to distinguish the two, though. We're talking about this, this solid waste. Capital improvement project was paid out of the eight ninety seven fund, the old sales tax, which. We also use that to offset our twenty twenty five budget, and we did four hundred and ninety thousand of cash. From that fund, so when we're just talking here with a hundred and seventy two dollars in the twenty twenty five start. That is the dedicated nine ninety seven sales tax that we're collecting three quarters cent. To go and pay for those two. I just wanted to make sure that the the clarity, when we use the word sales tax, that we know the difference of what was versus what is.
Sure.
And is there, and eight ninety seven is no more?
No, there is, it's um two hundred and. Eighty six, two hundred and ninety four thousand still in there.
Okay, so even though we're negative on the nine ninety seven, we still have. Sales tax money available, okay, so.
It's like a little cushion, I guess, really, if for some reason the money doesn't come in.
Well, that that's good to know, because then it it. It don't look like we're.
Expending it before you get it.
Yeah, I mean, we actually were solid, it's just the fund that we're taking it of. Uh, plus with, like I said before, we we don't have the, the project, the project is done. And then the last year on the project, they went over because there was a payment.
Correct, in the new year.
Yeah, yeah, so we didn't spend more on the project than what was forecasted, it just came in a different calendar year than what was anticipated.
Right.
Okay, just to make, I'm trying to run through, so I know where we're at. Thank you.
Okay, so reserves. Right now. There is three hundred and sixty five thousand. One sixty eight forty four in reserve. I don't know how uh specific you want to get, but the remaining county general budgets. Um, because that's all that we can really do, uh, solid waste. Joint Communications. Noxious weed. And Extension Council. Should not roll any money over. Um, the reason why for joint communications and solid waste. You can't roll over money if you don't have the cash, so we ended twenty four with pretty much nothing. Um, so if you were to roll over their remaining budget. You would end up with negative and and we can't do that, so the other funds. It, you don't have to roll those over, because if you, whatever is sitting there remaining, will just carry over to the new year like normal. But the general fund is is different. And that's our only levied fund that is this way, so. We have about a hundred and fifty four thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Remaining in the twenty twenty four budget from all the departments. So that money could be rolled over to the reserve fund. However, when you roll money over from county general, you withdraw the cash out of that fund. And you move it to the cash in the reserve fund. So when we ended twenty twenty four, we had two hundred and ninety one thousand. In cash. Two hundred and fifteen of that was the C D. So if you take two fifteen minus the two ninety one. Um, you get, let's just say seventy five thousand left, so seventy five thousand is not enough. To cover the one fifty four. That's truly. Budget remaining. Um, I had questions from some elected officials about how to use their remaining budgets. So. I don't have an answer for them, we we haven't talked about it.
Can you tell me about eight ninety seven number again, the?
Yeah, I don't know it.
Oh, I tell you, sorry, I thought.
It's like.
It's two hundred and.
Two hundred and thirteen, nine sixty one.
Thank you.
Um, the good news is. There was just a few departments that was over budget, everyone else had money remaining.
What, who was over budget?
The departments was the county clerk. Maintenance. And E M S.
And of the one fifty four, three oh three, can you tell me um, the elected portion of that?
Absolutely. So the county clerk out of that is negative forty three hundred. The treasurer, it's, and these are just rough estimates, I can get you exact penny figures if if you want. Um, the county treasurer is sixty seven hundred positive. The county attorney is thirty three thousand, seven hundred positive. Registered deeds is twenty five hundred positive.
Take her again.
Twenty five hundred. Election, which goes with the clerk, was twenty thousand, four hundred positive. Um, the sheriff, he has uh two budgets that's split but together. Um, so the net of the both of them is almost fourteen thousand positive. It looks like he was over in the law enforcement side, but under in the jail side. So it netted to fourteen thousand positive remaining. And that is after the period thirteen is done, so no more twenty twenty four expenses, um, that's all taken out of that. Um, there's several um departments that have a lot left, like I T has seventy five thousand left. Appraiser has forty four thousand left. I think with the appraiser one, there was, remember she came to you guys about having two positions that was combined to one. To save money and and such, so um, that's where that extras coming from, I don't know with Scott, I didn't have a chance to visit with I T about. About that. Big seventy five thousand dollar one left, but it looks like it was. Some capital outlay, computer services and telephone. Um, I remember with telephone, there was, we were working with Rainbow and A T N T. Waiting for that transition time where we were supposed to be all on Rainbow, cuz it was saving, it was fiber, it was cost effective, and I think that could be on that one. That that was the savings from going to Rainbow, um, but as far as the other ones, I I think he would be better to say why we didn't. Spend those. And it could be, um, I had asked all departments to to prioritize. Because I knew we were getting low in the general fund with the the cash, um, the prioritized project, so he could have pushed some aside. Due to that, so of course, when you push it aside, he didn't use the budget.
So do you show about seventy three thousand for elected and of the one fifty four?
Tell you the truth, I didn't add them together.
Okay, I just want to make sure that. And I can mess with it.
We totally can, um, roughly.
You're good, I just.
Uh, who are the appraisers?
Yeah, sure, you get it. Forty four thousand, five seventy two. Yeah, and that would consist of the salary plus the benefits that he. Equal that, so. Um, it's great for her department to be able to do that and sa- save the county, so I guess what I'm with that. It's when it came to the twenty twenty five budget, she budgeted accurately, that will be a a leftover. Um, it's just in twenty four, she had the money, so I think advocating for that. Um, she plans every two years, her and Roger do the um. The aerial photography for the county, I think it's two years, isn't it?
I think it, you know, Roger's probably listening to come over, I think when Roger sees a really good deal on it, he jumps on it, and I. That may turn out to be every two years, but I think it might, might not be planned so much as.
Okay, just when it comes up. So, I mean, it. If I were her, I would argue, would like to keep that, then you don't have to really budget for it. If you have it in reserve.
All I said every two years.
Every two, that's what I thought, um, but same time, if you budget for it, then you don't have to. Plan the what-if game, if you don't have the rollover.
Um, so. I kind of would like to lean on you a little bit for your. Thoughts on this as the finance director, because you have sat at the with us, okay? Or um, I can tell you my thoughts and then I'd love you to have feedback, um, I think that, um. Consolidating some of this, so that we actually know what's going on and that maybe we put some policies in place. How to use a reserve, when to use a reserve, so that we actually have a reserve, and that commissioners can't just. Make decisions to lower things by using all the cash, like I'd like to see, you know. A reserve that's generating interest, and what does that look like, so that there's a plan moving forward, right, that? The cash is making you more cash, um, so I was wondering if we took the eight ninety seven and we added that on to your reserve fund. That would leave us, that would put five hundred and seventy nine thousand in our reserve. And then if we took the appointed reserves of the eighty one, and again, my rough, rough numbers, eighty one, three oh three. And also put that in there. That would get us a reserve that we currently don't have, for all the things that we talked about this morning, like we didn't, we cut, 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 cut. The walls blowing out, what are we gonna do, right, like, it would give us a. A reserve for those oh moments that we may need. Um, and then also allow us to line item out our elected again, like we wanted to, like we agreed doing. A couple of years ago, to where when we're having those budget discussions, we know, right? Why, why do we have this leftover, what are you planning to use it, like it's just a good. Communication tool of like. Because everybody's trying to budget what they need, but there's unknowns, right, from from all of the. Things, um. And honestly, taking elected reserves was not in the plan. It was basically forced upon, how do we cut one point six million dollars?
Yep.
Um, so I think doing right by all of of how we were. Were going for it, I mean, I think, and also those are good conversations to know, or if. If there's twenty, you know. Twenty thousand, four hundred dollars, like what does it look like, like moving forward, or if it's fourteen thousand? It's just, it's a communication. Uh, discussion to ensure we are budgeting correctly too, right?
Yep.
Um, I don't know, that's just kind of. My thoughts, because utilizing that much cash. Um, for this year's budget made me real nervous, and I'd like to see us start generating interest on it.
So just with that being said, so I said the ending cash balance was two ninety one. Two hundred and fifteen thousand of it.
Okay, hold on, where are you at, the two ninety?
Uh, yeah, that was the cash, two hundred and ninety one, eight fifty was the ending cash for twenty twenty four.
Okay, two ninety one, eight fifty.
Yeah, two.
But that was with the.
That was with the C D, so you take that away, it's seventy six, eight fifty.
Okay.
We had, or do have a hundred and fifty four, three oh three. Of unused budget. So if you take a hundred and fifty four, three oh three away from the seventy six, eight fifty, you will be negative. So you will start twenty twenty five with kind of a negative balance.
Okay.
Which just. Which kind of prolongs, kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit, now we're in twenty twenty five, if we don't collect what we're supposed to in twenty twenty five. Will we be at the same? Problem. In November.
Very well.
Cuz if if, cuz we are saying we are gonna. Because if if, because we are saying we are gonna collect exactly. Those taxes.
And it's always, but we always have.
Yeah.
Until this year.
Right, and and we did it. So what if we don't again? And I don't know the answer to it, I just want everyone to. To know about it and have it upfront.
Yeah, hundred percent.
I wonder if. Is there any way of putting on like a listserv or have other counties experienced the same thing?
They have experienced the same thing, I don't know specifics. On or how so be yours.
You know, that would be.
Yeah.
Uh, you know. Other source of of why or how how they're dealing with it.
And not, not every county responds. You get maybe three or four that do.
So what would your recommendation be?
Well, I think. I don't know, probably not, no one's gonna like it, but. I don't see how you can really. Build a reserve. With the numbers that we had in twenty four. I don't know how you can roll anything over, knowing that it was already tough. Knowing that we had to cash in a CD at the end of twenty four just to survive. Now we wanna roll more over into reserve. I I suppose you can roll more into reserve if you cash in another CD.
So you're saying leave the balance alone?
That's what I would say, yeah, but I know it's not gonna be a popular opinion.
Well, there's a lot of things that haven't been popular opinions and. We're kind of, we, our hand was forced. To. Use the cash, I mean, when you certify to the public a middle levy and you have to. Figure it out.
But I don't know what kind of pressure or comeback we would face. From. Anyone that says, you know, that was the budget the board gave me. I'm supposed to use it. And now I can't use it or whatever reason. I don't know what that's gonna look like, I don't know what kind of.
But if there's luck, oh, there's a way, a couple. That went, oh. I could see that would be a question for then, I mean, that would be from them, but. If the year is over and they were still positive, I mean, they were within their budget. I I I don't think that would be. The pressure from them that there would be is if they're negative and and now, uh, how do we fund?
I know there's a couple departments that. Know that they have money left in their budget and they wanna use it. Or roll it over and use it for something that they didn't get to in that budget year.
Now. Outside appropriations, outside. Uh, agencies. Traditionally. If there's been payment under protest or things like that, they don't necessarily get a hundred percent of what's budgeted, correct?
Correct.
I mean, if if it's like extension service, I mean, there there might be a couple thousand less. There is supposed to get a hundred and eighty thousand, well, maybe they'd only ever get hundred seventy five, hundred seventy eight thousand, one eighty.
So you have to look at the delinquency rate to know what's. Can be given.
Is that kind of a precedent? I mean, it's like, okay, we didn't get the cash or we couldn't. I mean.
I don't know, this is. I don't know, we haven't faced it like this before, so it's just, it's new. We've never not collected. This much before. Going back to twenty fourteen, we've never not collected this much.
We're going back to the suggestion that we find out. The information from the appraiser's office. Um. Can we also find out? Specifically, the difference between this year and last year on collections.
Not from the appraiser, but we can do the the treasures.
Well, yeah, from the treasures, can we find out? Um, it's because those two things seem to be what's driving us, it's it's the. The possible. Abatements and then the, just the late. Payments.
Yes.
And I I'd be curious to know. This time. Well, let's see, so you're saying we should know by. The fourth. February fourth on. Collections. So maybe pick a date and ask the treasurer, okay, this date last year. Where we're looking for this year, just so that we know. Specifically. What it is that's. That's the issue.
That's like last year, we didn't know that this was really coming until we got to the end of the year now, but we can. Be projecting forward. At least somewhat sooner, you know, to anticipate that problem.
Right.
Which is. We don't want the problem, but we wanna know it as soon as possible if we do that.
And then, then the other, the question about the reserves for the. Twenty four departments, the the. The money rolling over, uh. I wouldn't think it would be. Too much to ask those departments to hold on because. We're waiting to see what happens. The thirty first, right, by the. By the thirty first or the fourth, between that, as far as collections goes. So. I don't think it would be too much to ask them to say, hey. Hold off on your. You know, on your excesses until we see what happens with collections. I mean, we're not talking apples and oranges here, right? We're, I mean, this is all.
Yeah.
County funding. So.
Yeah.
That would be my thought on. On their reserves and, you know, what they have planned for it.
So then now that twenty twenty four is closed, the thirteenth month, are are these frozen until we make a decision?
Um, so if we would have collected. Another three hundred thousand, we wouldn't even really, this would be a whole different conversation, I would just present, this is what's remaining.
Yep.
Can we roll it over? After you rolled over, you'll have two hundred thousand of positive cash.
And then we can put it reserve like we have in the past.
Like every other year.
Yeah.
But this is just a little different, because we didn't collect it, so. It's not there to really move. Um.
Is that collectible yet?
Yes.
I mean, so it's, it's still hanging out there, we may get it.
We may get it. Yeah. But we may get it after. At any point in time, we may get it, could be in twenty six or. Tomorrow. But getting it won't help twenty four though. Because well, it'll come in in twenty five.
Right.
So that's, that's where it's also tough too. It's like if you say you want a million dollars, but they don't pay it. Into in twenty five, well, it doesn't help your twenty four situation.
It's a little bit like a road, they um. Solid waste. Problem that they ended up having to be.
After.
Uh, go into a different calendar year. So then that.
So it hurts by twenty, yeah, it hurts that year that you're in, not the year that it was supposed to be.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna hold out and see February fourth, what the.
And that's just a couple weeks.
Yep.
Um. I can get the numbers, see how it stacks up. Um. And go from there. Even though. It it's still, we'll still have the same conversation. Um, how much do you wanna roll over? Because that's not gonna change. Twenty four's cash number. Twenty four is is what it is.
So you're saying the same conversation with seventy six thousand eight fifty of the cash without the CD leftover. And then you're still gonna ask us how we wanna handle the re.
Yes.
But your recommendation was to leave it alone. For just the time being, or in general?
I think just in general, because. I don't see how you can logically.
Roll something you didn't.
Exactly, just i- if you take a step out of like a business. And do it as as a personal checking account or something, you don't have the money, so you cash out your CD, now you have the money, why would you just give it away again?
Yep. I'm calling.
I mean. It's not, it's not any department's fault that people didn't pay, it it just. Or the the revenue didn't come in.
So, out, the county clerk. Was negative forty three hundred.
Correct.
Maintenance was negative.
Twenty nine thousand five hundred.
And EMS was negative.
Ninety eight thousand two hundred.
But even with that, we would still be negative. I mean, even if they broke even.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, because even, yeah. If they broke even, that would pretty much mean you had more money. To roll over because it wasn't negative in the hole, so you had more of it. But still the same dollar of cash.
You'd still be cashing your CD.
Right. Like I said, it's not popular, but I I really don't think that you should do it, um. Because I'm I'm out of options, I don't have anything else to give you guys on how to betle out. There, it's either another CD or. We invite Connie down here to talk about other options because I I don't have anything else. Or. Yeah, I don't know, or you use what. Reserve you have right now, this is the appointed, because remember we took the electeds back. Um. So this three hundred and sixty five. In reserve right now is the appointed, which is controlled by the commission. You could use that until the elected, they could have it. Um. Other than that, that's. Like instead of rolling this over. For the elected, you could say, you know, take that and. That's what you use.
No, we have to have a reserve.
If the.
We have to.
Uh, which I agree, I agree.
I mean, and that's not even enough, in my opinion, like it's.
No, we should, the standard from county government and municipalities is like ten percent. I did some verification, I talked to KAC, um, they said ten percent to twelve. That's not that. That's ten percent to twelve, ten to twelve percent of your entire county general budget. And that's entire budget. Is thirteen point three million. So that's. Pretty precious, I guess.
Okay. All right, well. Thank you for the update, if you guys have any other questions at this moment, one.
Okay, no, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, we have Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent, notice to proceed culvert replacement in dot five dash twenty four dot eight. Uh, King's Construction and Agreement to King's Construction for Culver Replacement in dot four dash twenty four dot eight. Morning.
So we really need to start with. Agree with the first. So there's four copies. And this is agreement on the uh, replacement of Culver in five twenty four point eight with King's Construction. Uh, for seventy four thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. Unfortunately, there are. Four copies that need to be signed, one goes to the clerk's office. Uh, I get one, Kings give one and. Uh. There's an extra one.
Just a quick thing, or these two items are the same, but there is one that's got a miss.
Yeah.
It's twenty four. N point four instead of N point five.
And it's N dot five, right?
It's N dot five dash twenty four point eight.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Sorry. To make sure that we are. Not talking.
And I think that I've got them all. Paper clipped.
I'd look for a motion to. To allow the chair to sign um, agreement zero zero five three one. This agreement made on this twenty first day of January twenty twenty five between the Acheson County Board of County Commissioners. As the owner to King's Construction. Corporation as the contractor in the amount of seventy four thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars for the culvert replacement on N dot. Five dash twenty four dot eight. Last these copies, if you guys wanna look at it before making a motion, these are just duplicates, I'll sign all four if approved.
And it's on three fourteenth road between K seven, seven.
Any other discussion you guys want? If not, I would for a motion.
Uh, one question, here like on R, it says addenda. Is that something?
If there's, if there's an addendum. The way I understand it, then. We would put it in there, but there hasn't been one.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that there wasn't something missing. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say hi.
Hi. We're supplying the culverts and they're doing a little work, so. Then I have a notice to proceed with King's Construction. Uh, for the culvert in five twenty four point eight. You wanna read this or you want me to?
Okay.
You're hereby notified to commence work in accordance with this agreement dated one twenty one, twenty twenty five. The date of completion of all work is four twenty one, twenty twenty five.
For a motion. You approve the notice to proceed zero zero four two zero for. King's Construction on Culver Replacement in dot five dash twenty four dot eight as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent. And to allow the chair to sign this document.
Soon. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Well, I talked to him yesterday, he's hoping to start next week. So. Right, you wanna PO today or do you wanna wait?
Wait.
Okay.
Uh, actually. For this one, if you have it today. Uh.
Well, it's gonna print.
Perfect, I mean, it's on the agenda, so we can go ahead and approve that. Signing. Um, okay. We have. Noted, no notices and communications. We have no resolutions. Uh, we do have uh, an executive session today.
We do.
So, if you still have, um. I'll print this off for you or forward it to you, so it's top of. The verbiage is in it. You should have it on, you know, I just sent it to you.
For the template? Is that what you're?
Um, so an executive session authorized and he gave you the number of Pat sent it to you in there. Uh, do you want that on the template? I'm talking about it now, I'll talk about it later, but I didn't know how that was supposed to go in there, just. The executive session. Yeah, I think just the language Mr. Henderson gave. Um, to discuss data relating to financial affairs of trade secrets corporations. Okay. Just like. That, okay, did you find it there? We can sign this, purchase one or two before we pop in. And yeah, you're a part of this executive.
Okay, well, I didn't know if there was more than one, so.
Yeah, no, this one, you will be named in it.
So Pat, would this be under personnel or attorney client?
No, there's an exception for, okay, so.
Right, trade secrets. Trade secrets.
Or business.
Sounds so.
I'm sorry, I, I should have looked up.
It's on there.
Well, this, well, but it don't.
What, what's the number?
Seventy-five dash four three one nine A four.
We'll take them out. There was a clear blue folder that we used to have that we could find, um, to where like.
To discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trust and individual proprietorships, that's all. That you need to say.
Okay, you don't need to, but the, the language about when we're coming out.
Yeah, that needs to be.
So do I? Read that off of attorney-client?
No, I think the motion would be to adjourn into an executive session. For the purpose of discussing data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. The purpose of the close meeting is to protect confidentiality of that information. And that you would come out of the executive session in how many minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes in the county commission room. And those present would be. Okay, for the four county commissioners, the. Joe Snyder, anyone else?
Uh, Mark.
I think that would be the motion.
Okay. So are we ready?
Yep.
End for that. I'll make an motion to go an executive session under the KSA seventy-five four three one nine A four. To allow us to discuss data related to your financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnership trusts. And individual proprietorships. And the purpose of the close session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion and the board will go in for fifteen minutes. Uh, those present will be, uh, the three commissioners, Rude and Bridge, Finance and County Counselor. Uh, come out in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement and, yeah.
One second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes through the zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um. And don't have anything else left on the agenda, so I would look for a motion to adjourn into a commission workshop.
So move.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes through zero.
This is strictly just the commissioners.
Yeah. Yes.
Thanks, Joe.